Thank you for being at today's work session. We are going to start today with the transportation bond implementation update. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Kenneth Ritchie with Transportation. Here will Sylvester Percival from Engineering Services, our project delivery partner, to provide an update on the transportation bond. A little bit of an agenda. We'll kind of walk through project origins, how projects are programmed, how they're funded, and then kind of look through a bond package, reviewing the 2017 transportation bond package. Then Sylvester will provide some updates on the projects, a look at funding status, and then I'll kind of end, kind of looking forward, potentially with the next bond referendum. So, projects originate from comprehensive plan, area corridor plans, and resident council requests. They're scored based on safety, congestion, transit, bike ped demand, and economic development to create our prioritization. The city council has reviewed and approved project priorities in the last three bond cycles, starting in 2011, which was 40 million, 2013 was 75 million, and then most recently 2017, which was 206.7 million. These projects and funding allocations are reviewed annually through the CIP budget review process. So, looking at how capital projects are funded, the overwhelming majority of the funding for these projects is through bonds. There is an element of pay-go or cash that does help fund bonds. A significant majority of the CIP pay-go cash does go to support our maintenance and our resurfacing efforts, and then certainly there's an element of grants that we use to try and extend the reach of our bond dollars. Now, we'll take a look at the 2017 bond program. So, this 2017 bond package, these are the program areas that were identified in the bond. One caveat to that is the Complete Streets Implementation. This was an action that was taken in late 2020 that brought together our streetscape and our area plan buckets into one Complete Streets Implementation Program, really focused on safety, access-type projects, more spot safety-type projects, to try and improve the user experience. A lot of these are focused with partnerships, and certainly looking at how we kind of, how we move forward, our kind of multimodal sidewalk bicycle-type infrastructure. The next area, and the largest area of the 2017 bond, was with the major identified kind of catalytic projects. All of these have been in active status. I will make a note that there are, there's one that has been canceled. There are three that construction has been deferred based off of previous action. I'm going to review those on the next slide. So, just kind of looking at previous council actions, the Leesville Road B project, that was canceled as part of the fiscal year 21 budget. That was at a time where we started to identify some projected gaps with funding on projects, and that was one that certainly had some opposition from the public and was not one that was, that the council chose to continue to move forward. The Lumley-Westgate Ebenezer Church Road, the Marsh Creek Road, and Trewick Road, and the West Street Extension, those were deferred as part of the FY23 budget in CIP. Those were only deferred for construction. We retained funding for design and for acquisition to continue those moving forward in anticipation of those potentially showing on a next transportation bond referendum. So, next, I will transition it to Sylvester, who will provide a project status update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. The remainder of this presentation or update is pertaining to project delivery. There are several factors that influence the key components of project delivery. Those key components are schedule and cost. Take, for example, schedule drivers. Project scoping, the need for a deeper dive into what it actually takes to design and construct the project, get these improvements on the ground. Takes time, especially when consultants are involved. Fees have to be negotiated. Public engagement and feedback. We take this very seriously. We look at the public as our external partners, and so the need to get their feedback, help us make decisions, important decisions, that will drive our project forward is key to keeping our project moving forward successfully. External coordination and permitting. Oftentimes, we will have to deal with permitting agencies on all three levels, federal, state, and local. It's very important that we navigate harmoniously through this process, because oftentimes, one permit need will require that you meet the need of the others, and so that takes time. Property acquisition, very important along the lines of what we just mentioned with the public. We try to be, a public engagement process, we try to be as transparent as we can, as early as we can during the process, in order to make certain that the transparency is maintained as to what should be expected once we get to this property acquisition process. Property acquisition, oftentimes, when we're not able to successfully settle with property owners, we will condemn, just to be able to move forward with the project, and then settle with those property owners later on. And so, again, the process can take quite some time. Staff resources speaks for itself. If you don't have the resources, of course, schedule will be impacted. Cost drivers. Speaking to the real estate market, again, speaks for itself, but that makes it very difficult for us to be able to effectively budget our projects. It's kind of a moving target, and so that drives cost. Materials market. The supply chain is such that we're seeing very high prices with, relative to materials needed to be able to get projects on the ground. Likewise or similarly, labor market. We continue to hear from our vendors that maintaining labor force is very challenging, and that drives cost. So, keeping those two key components in mind, schedule and cost, I'll provide you with a status update of where the projects are currently, relative to both. Starting with the schedule. Corridor sidewalks. We have approximately completed around 12 corridor sidewalk projects, and the remainder of those corridor sidewalk projects are scheduled to be completed next year, in 2024. Petition sidewalk projects. We have 27 of them. 12 of them have been just about completed. The remainder are also scheduled to be completed next year, in 2024. Street petitions, we have 10 street petition projects. Three have been completed. Five of the remaining are scheduled to be completed next year, in 2024. The last two are scheduled to be completed early 2025. Completed projects, we have seven completed projects. Two most recent of those are Yonkers and Tryon Road, completed last year. This is just a little snippet of both the Tryon and Yonkers road completion. Top left is Tryon, bottom right is Yonkers. The projects that we currently have under construction, seven of them, actually six, pardon me, I think it's important to note that the Rock Quarry Road A project is being delivered by NCDOT. We are partnering with them to deliver that project. Also important to note that the Blue Ridge Road Bridge Improvement Project is more commonly known internally as the Blue Ridge Road Bike and Ped Project, in case you were wondering. Oberlin Road, it's at the very early stage of its construction process. We are planning to request that council award that bid at its June 6 council meeting. We have seven projects that are under design and the design and acquisition process, and all seven, we're looking forward to getting them on the ground sometime within the next, either this year or next year, depending, two of them, and as we proceed with the future slides, you will explain this, but two of them, we certainly have gaps associated with them, budget gaps, and so depending on how, the feedback that we receive from city council, we will know more about that, those schedules. Projects canceled and deferred. Kenneth kind of touched on this earlier, but Leesville Road B, very early on, was canceled. Lumley, Westgate, Marsh Creek, Trewick, and West Street Extension, we're progressing with those designs, moving forward with them, in anticipation that we will receive future So, relative to the project's budget, we feel that we're in a good place, relative to most of them, with the exception of Old Wake Forest Road and Six Forks Road. You can see the budget caps there, 1 million, and the reason why we're showing double numbers for the Six Forks Road is because, in actuality, the current funding that we show in our books is actually 46.1 million. However, we received approval to receive federal funds, but the grant funding agreement has not been signed, and so we chose to reflect the additional 14 million that we are supposed to be getting, that we got approved for, for the grant funding, and it's reflected in the 60 million that's shown in the budget. And the gap is, the relative gap is shown in the, in the gap section. With this, I'd like to invite Kenneth to provide the closing statements to the presentation.
Thank you, Sylvester. So, certainly as we move towards the, the end of the 2017 bond, we start thinking about what, what's next, and start thinking about a potential future bond. And so, what does that mean from a planning standpoint? Certainly, we look at deferred or canceled projects that could be under consideration. Another element that we have is with our investment in BRT, knowing that we'll need funding for general purpose lanes to help push those projects through, and then certainly looking at our commitments to Vision Zero, our sidewalks, our bike infrastructure, really diversifying our transportation facility, and then looking at the logistics, targeting potentially a 2024 referendum, with public engagement likely starting very soon this summer. And one of the elements that we will likely come back to council with will be looking at a makeup of a steering or advisory committee to help staff start to run that process through. And with that, we will gladly take any questions.
Okay, Councilmember Ford, and then Mayor Procham.
So, I'm looking at slide, I think it's number seven, which has the 2017 bond package major projects on it.
Let me go back to that.
Yeah. So, it looks like the total is 150 million, and the total bond package was 206 million, so is there an overage, or could you explain that?
Councilmember Ford, could you talk in your microphone?
Yeah. So, it looks like the project's total was 150 million, and their bond package total was 206 million, so is there?
So, that differential, there was 56 million in that bond package that was the program areas that I had spoke to the slide before.
Did you get clarity on that? Okay. Mayor Procham?
So, some, it's been a while. We've talked about Six Forks Road forever, it seems like, but somewhere I thought the gap was like 19 million in the presentation, and now it's like doubled, tripled.
So, I will let Sylvester speak to that, but I do believe after we've gone, started going through the appraisal process for the real estate, that the, the real estate costs have started to grow exponentially beyond what we could have projected when we, even last year when we had this presentation.
That is absolutely correct. That is something that we did not anticipate, and so it's essentially the reason for the difference.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
When you say "real estate cost," you're talking about the acquisition of, the rest of the four members of council were not here when this, if you could explain that in more detail, I think that could be helpful.
Sure. It's the, and I'd mentioned this as one of the drivers for, for the schedule, as well as the, the cost, but it's essentially the point at which we contact and have discussions with the property owners about the land interest that we need to improve the project. And so, you know, one of the things that kind of first brought this to light, just to explain the surprise that we got, we started with the appraisals that we started receiving. Once we got those appraisals, we were able to pinpoint a little bit more the potential cost of real estate that we were dealing with, and so hence the exponential growth that Kenneth just mentioned.
Councilmember Black, talking about Six Forks Road, do you have questions on that? Now is an appropriate time to, it's a work session, it's appropriate time to have these conversations.
I had a question. So, I know, I thought, I thought Counselor Patton was going to go next, so I was going to raise my hand. You can.
Yeah, I can jump in. I want to, I just want to, slide 21, I just want to make sure I really understand what's in this cell. So, 46 million, 46.1 million is what we've already got, and then this grant funding, we've, it's like to the tune of 14 million. We have it, but it's not signed, so we're just experiencing an administrative delay?
So, the Campo Executive Board did approve that project for grant funding through the locally administered projects program in February. Before we would budget that, there would be a municipal agreement that we would have to execute that would then put that on the books, so that's why we're showing them separately right now.
Okay. And what kind of timeline would it take to do all that that you just described?
So, I believe that we're in the process, and I would anticipate within the next few months that we should have that agreement finalized, and then before the council for final approval.
Got it. Okay. And so then, once you have that, the 60.1 million dollars, there's still an additional gap of the 55.9 that's shown there?
That's correct.
Okay. Wow. Okay.
So, I guess.
Hi. So, I guess my question, because I've gotten, I just want to make sure, this is a part of the Six Forks Corridor Plan that has been in motion for a while now?
That is correct. So, this is part of that plan that I think started stakeholder outreach in roughly 2012. Plan was adopted in 2018 and has been moving forward, so this is phase one.
Wow. 10 years later, 11 years later. I guess my question really has been around like the questions I've been getting in the community, and how the community has been included, because I've been getting a lot of questions from like middle schoolers. There's a lot of middle schools and schools on Six Forks itself, and they're just like, what's happening? Why is this happening? How can we be a part of it? So, I guess that's my question, like what is the, the steps or the understanding around the community engagement with the, I guess, the assets that are on Six Forks Road that could be affected by the corridor expansion or changing?
So, certainly there's been, there was extensive outreach during the corridor study effort, and then as it transitioned over into delivery, we've had at least two, if not three, and I could be corrected, major public meetings. We've also been trying to do stakeholder meetings with the, the citizen advisory group in the area on a regular basis, kind of working through a lot of that. In terms of direct engagement with the school, I'm not abundantly clear, but certainly I know that Wake County Public Schools has been made aware of the public engagement efforts that we've had on this project.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess so, you, so we still have a, like two levels of gaps that still need to be met, so, I mean, I guess beyond the timeline, like what exactly needs to happen there to like make things move quicker?
So, I think at this point, identifying how we're going to fund the project is really the operative question. We, as the appraisal process has started, we've started to identify the funding that we'll need to buy the real estate. We've got to have the real estate in order to build the project, because whether it's permanent easements, or whether there's temporary easements, we will need those before we can, and with the LAP grant too, we will have to have all that in hand before we would get sign-off from the federal government to be able to move this project into construction. And so, we're teed up, ready for that. I think there's still some effort that has to go based off of some federal guidelines with regards to the appraisal process, but we're trying to move this forward. I think the challenge becomes is just knowing what this gap is, and not knowing how it may close, how much further do we push until we can figure that out?
Okay. I guess those are like mainly my only questions. I was just trying to understand more of how, specifically the schools were engaged, because like, like we, there's between Spring Forest and the Belt Line, I think there's about five schools, maybe four, that are right there, and they have all reached out to me specifically about like the corridor changes, and just like the plans that are happening, and how it's going to affect like walkability, and kids being able to get to school, like walking there. And there's already like a lot of concerns, like I know in front of Carol Middle School, they don't have a sidewalk currently.
And certainly with, at the end of the project, the anticipation is, is that the experience for bikers, pedestrians will be extremely enhanced from what it is today, because we're looking at separated bike and pedestrian facilities along both sides of that corridor from Rowan to Lynn. Obviously noted on the missing sidewalks out there today, and certainly during construction, there will be some interruption, but the final product, should it be able to move forward, will be a much different experience than, than those users have today.
Fingers crossed. I take that corridor every day.
Well, the whole purpose really is to improve pedestrian and bicycling safety, and also just safety in general, so that's an important facet of it. Councilmember Ford, and then Councilmember Melton.
So, going back to slide, I think it's number 14, the petition sidewalks. I will note, I don't see anything in District D.
And that would be correct. Now, I do, so there.
And Councilmember Harris is not here, so I, you know, want to, in her absence, lift up District D.
One thing I can say is there is a group that was completed probably five years ago or more, and I do believe there were some in that district that were there that, just for sake, we're not showing on here, but certainly, the petition sidewalks especially are, are a citizen-initiated process, so really it becomes incumbent on the residents to, to kind of push those types of efforts forward. So, really, there's the program, the previous program, because the program is on hold currently, because up until last year, there was a funding gap for both the petition processes that was filled with capital reserve transfer that we're working on building down, and I know there's a strategic plan initiative that's looking at the petition process in whole, and will likely be bringing back later this year some recommendations on that, really based around the equity.
Yeah, because I do remember there were folks who inquired about getting petitions in various areas, particularly off of Western Boulevard and some of those areas, so I was just kind of curious to see, you know, where they were in the queue, or if you had any idea.
So, certainly as those projects have been coming in, we have still been taking in those requests, and really kind of adding them to our list of sidewalks that we've got, just so that as we do bring those recommendations forward from that, for the next iteration of what the petition process may look like, we'll have them ready to program into a larger, larger process.
Councilmember Melton?
You mentioned earlier that the projects that have a gap, we still need to figure out how to fund those. It looks like that Six Forks Road, and Old Wake Forest Road, and Dixie Forest Road. And then when I look at the future bond planning for projects, the criteria we have listed is deferred projects, but would we include these gaps in funding also in any future bond? Is that an option?
So, certainly, and I think as it relates to Old Wake Forest and Dixie Forest, that is a grant-funded project as well, so what we're projecting right now is about a million-dollar gap, but should we realize that gap, we do have the ability to get, to look at a 50-50 split as part of the grant to help close that gap. And certainly, as we get through our year-end, we're looking at completed projects, things like that, that we may be able to close out POs and things to open up funding, so it's very likely that, that we probably have the funding to do that. We just want to make sure that we were transparent with where we are today.
Yeah, I think I just want to maybe level set for the table. Looking at the history of the transportation bonds in the city, the one in 2017 was 206 million. 2011 and 2013 were both, you know, 40 and 75 million, which as far as bonds goes, seems relatively small. When you look at just the projects we have that have gaps, I mean, if we have to fund the rest of Six Forks Road just through a new bond, that's taking up more than the bond in, yeah, sorry, 2011, and more than the, almost as much as 2013. We have a lot of projects that have gone through a lot of engagement. The public is expecting them, and we haven't delivered all of them yet because of these funding issues. And so, I, I would like to see us think bold and big for a future transportation bond. These are things that we know that we need. They improve quality of life, and for a lot of them, it's just been promises deferred. And so, I do think we need to be thinking about that when we're talking about what a future transportation bond looks like, and I would also love to see us be programming more of that money for non-car infrastructure as well. And I think we're doing a really good job of when we're building these projects, including the bike lanes and multi, you know, use paths, but that's the kind of stuff I think that we need moving forward. The only other question I had was, I've asked about this, I don't remember where it got cut from, but the Rest of Peace Street Improvement Project, that got cut or deferred when we were going through COVID, where is that?
So, that was a 20, I believe that was a 2011 bond-funded project, so that was canceled. I believe it may have, it may have been the fiscal year before, it may have been with FY21. I think part of the challenge we've got there is the amount of development that's going on, and some of the challenges we got from a costing standpoint at that point was really trying to strategically see how the development pattern came along that corridor.
So, that was a canceled or deferred project too, but it's just not on this list because it was so old?
Correct.
And then, if I recall correctly, the West Street Extension, which we anticipate being some form of tunnel, we had deferred construction, we didn't have the money, but the remaining funds have been put into getting the project shovel-ready, which we think is going to help with our competitiveness for grant money in the future?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Patton?
Yeah.
Then Black, then Mayor Procham?
I think it's slide 13, sidewalk, sidewalk package. Yeah, I was just curious, this prompted me to have a question about coordination with NCDOT. The Lewisburg Road sidewalk project is, is beautiful, they're very beautiful sidewalks, and also Lewisburg Road improvements are coming from NCDOT really soon, and I drive by those beautiful sidewalks every day and feel sad that they're going to be torn up, and so I just, I'm curious like what y'all do to make sure projects align, and we don't kind of duplicate work?
So, certainly, we are, we try to make every effort to coordinate with DOT, to try and not duplicate work, and certainly not create additional waste where infrastructure goes in and gets ripped out. So, certainly, we're coordinating with DOT to the fullest extent we can.
So, I want to circle back to something that Councilmember Melton mentioned, specifically around financing with some of the gap financing, so he said, like, we have to be creative about where we can get some of the financing from when it comes from the bonds. Is bonds, or that, is that the only avenue for getting financing for stuff like this? Is it just like strictly bonds and grants? Like, I don't, I'm, I guess we're trying to understand the process.
So, bonds are our largest pot of money to help facilitate our capital program. Then there's, there's the pay-go of the cash, which we do have, we, there's some funding that comes from that on an annual basis from a CIP standpoint, and then grants are really the next avenue. Those really, I think, are the three kind of finance, funding options that we have, and certainly from a grant standpoint, we are looking at how we can more readily leverage the programs that are, that have been available, and certainly some of the new programs that are going to be available, to try and help stretch our dollars more.
Thanks.
I just want to say just thank you for the information. One of the things I do see in here is talking about the BRT general purpose lanes in the future bond as well. I know we're also going to be using Wake County, the transit bond that passed, to cover a lot of that, those costs. So, just wherever we can partner with the county, maybe some of these improvements, I think would be great. I know the Peace Street part from Eatonton to MLK, BRT changed that plan because of the roads and things of that structure. I would just ask for an update in the fall, after you close out this year's budget, and some of the information, and you have the math, some of the numbers, like you may come back in the fall, and that 1 million may be gone, which we hope it is, and maybe that 55, you know, we don't know what the market's going to do. That number may go down. I pray it goes down and not up, but again, as we move forward.
Let's not hope for a recession to make that happen, though.
Well, I don't want a recession either, but you know, everything in life, everything in life and economy always right sizes, if we like it or not, and we just have to prepare for it, and I think as good stewards, as government, that's what we need to prepare for. So, I just think, just coming back in the fall with more information, and also possibly, I see up here targeting fall 2024 referendum. I know what that means. We may need to have a work session for our new council members, because it'll be their first time going through it, and then just looking at. it. And then just looking at other things. And I even put out maybe just some two-thirds somewhere out there that we might be able to find and use based upon the last bonds. So I just want to just thank you as, as we kind of move forward. And just remember, you know, keeping the public engaged and updated. If we can just make sure our website IT, if we can just make sure our website IT, if we can make sure our website is updated with information, I think that would help with a lot of the public engagement.
Okay, I'm just going to put in a pitch for the two-way conversion, P Street and Person, I mean, Person and Blount Street. It was the very first project I worked on in 2007 when I got on City Council. I remember having a charrette. Mitch Silver, back then, led it. We had about 50 people there, and that was the start of the conversation. And I went to a meeting this morning, and we're still talking about it. And it's like, we all know, talking about Vision Zero, whatnot, improving safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, you know, this ranks at top of the list. So we don't have highways running down our city anymore, but two-way conversions are important to look at as well in terms of the future of downtown and slowing traffic. So I just had to put a little pitch in for that. I've been waiting for a long time.
Understood.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you. This has been really informative. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a parks bond implementation recommendations.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Stephen Bentley, Director of Raleigh Parks. I'm excited to be in front of you today to talk about some of the strategies we've developed over the last 10 months. Yes, we began planning for the implementation for the bond before the bond was passed. And one of the reasons is your last presentation. And the next slide, which is, I'm still talking to you about the 2014 bond. So our goals in this are to eliminate and reduce those unknown factors so we can be on time and on budget and meet communities' expectations. Today's agenda, we'll look at the project lists and implementation. We'll look at the budget rollout schedule, some high-level recommendations for community engagement, as well as some construction, delivery, method recommendations, and then a little bit more about next steps. So again, 2014 was a $91 million bond. 80% of those projects are complete. The, the remaining 20% are in design and construction. We did have additional funding. 4 million was added, the council added 4 million from capital reserve, but we were able to yield $8 million in grants and donations. So we leveraged about a 10% increase in the last bond, and we hope to do the same with this next bond referendum. So as a reminder, just the objectives of this bond were to address a range of community priorities from health and wellness. At the forefront of the chosen projects was park access and park equity, and we also looked at how we can balance growth and existing facility needs. I'm happy to say that the bond approved at 73.24%. And this bond compared to the last, at the last bond, we had 70 projects. This has 23. However, this bond totals 275 million, so larger, some more larger and complex bond projects. One thing I wanted to share is when staff brought forward the 23 projects in 2022, the actual price to deliver those projects was $296 million. The council gave the directive to establish the bond at 275 million with the goal of directing staff to work with grant agencies, public-private partnerships, philanthropy, donations, naming rights, and working with our partners like Stormwater and Transportation on opportunities to leverage our dollars. So your takeaway here in the next couple of slides is that the yellow doesn't show up very well, I apologize, but the three at the bottom, we actually reduced when we set the, the recommendation to council. So Neighborhood Connections, Smokey Hollow and Walnut Creek were slightly reduced. Same with Aaron's Brook, Neuse River Park, and Strickland Road. And then finally, Chavis Phase Two, Method in Surtoma and Tarboro. So overall, we have about $20 million in grants and, and various forms of opportunities to make up. If we don't make up that, we will design to the level of the budget. So we want to be very clear to the community, if we have, if we have $10 million, we're going to design to $10 million. So we are continuously meeting expectations. This is just a slide to remind the council of some of the financial considerations. This bond has a four-penny impact. It's split between operations and capital, so 2.6 pennies for capital investments and 1.4 pennies to support operations. And then, just so the council's aware, we have to spend those funds over seven years. That does a lot of things. It assures our fiscal stewardship associated with the tax impacts. We will program those funds over four years. You will see that on Tuesday when the city manager presents her budget. And then we want to make sure that as we roll projects out, we're maximizing the cash flow. So when our finance department goes and borrows money, that funds are going out the door, and we don't sit on those funds. So we looked at four areas that we wanted to bring to you today. These four areas is how we looked at how we can more equitably roll out projects, all 23 projects. Number one is that we looked at the Wake County Community Health and Vulnerability Index, and those projects that are located within those areas will go first. We also looked at areas within the city that have limited park access. So think about, you have to get in your car to drive. We just heard from transportation, we want people to walk to and bike, bike to parks. We have a few projects that are already underway, and then those projects that have long lead times, like master plans. One thing I started off with is that we've, we've spent 10, 10 to 11 months, several departments, which I'll highlight in the next couple of slides, establishing goals and then working on kind of the backend stuff that you all don't see and that the community don't see. So our goal was to make sure we complete the projects within the time expectation and the budget set by council, and then being very realistic with the community that we have a certain amount of time to complete projects, if not, the projects go up, but also meeting the desires of their expectations as well. So we have already established project management communications, charters, which are agreements between departments. We've looked at demographics in every single project. We've done some early touchpoints with communities. We've worked with our finance and budget departments on cash flow. We've prepared RFQs to hire our designers or requests for qualifications. We have already met with the Public Art Design Board about their expectations. And when the council adopts the budgets, I heard Mayor Protem talk about websites, we have established a website for every project you'll hear today. So when the budget's adopted, we can click go, and the community can see and hear more about them. So I do want to share appreciation and gratitude. We have been working, as I shared, for months with community engagement, the Office of Equity and Inclusion, Engineering Services, multiple aspects. Stormwater is going to lead projects, roadway is going to lead projects, our Construction Management Division, our Planning Departments, the list goes on and on, Budget Finance Attorneys, Sustainability. So what we did very early on to say, this is not a parks bond, this is a city bond, because it affects every aspect of the city. So for you today, I have a kind of a high-level bar chart. You can see the projects that we are recommending leading early, which is Big Branch Greenway and Lake Lynn, which is completing the second portion of the loop. Lake Wheeler is already under design. We have, we're recommending in a couple of years to start the Marsh Creek feasibility study. Mine Creek improvements south of Shelley Lake and Crabtree Creek. We have some projects underway with the Neighborhood and Community Connections Program. Just to remind you that you approved one of these projects already, which is a bridge across the Neuse River, I'm sorry, not Neuse River, Crabtree Creek. And that's a public-private partnership. It was on your last council agenda. And we want to start Walnut Creek early. That's one of our oldest corridors, and if you look at the condition of that corridor compared to some of our new greenways, there's a distinct difference. And I have Smokey Hollow down, it is already underway, so we are under design for Smokey Hollow, or initial designs. Biltmore Hills Tennis, we recommend right away moving forward with that. Plaza, Dix Plaza Play is already under design. We're recommending in a year to start, start design on the Phase Two for Dix. We are recommending in next year to begin the, the design for Aaron's Brook Park. We do have a master plan. But we are recommending the next four projects, Green Road, Kyle Drive, Neuse River, the Heritage Walk, and two new restrooms at Strickland and Leesville, all of those to start design and implementation this year. And then finally, these are park building projects. We're recommending, waiting a year to look at the, the outfit of possible operations building for Dix Park till next year, starting Chavis right away. Method, we've already had a community touchpoints with the Method community, waiting a year to start on the Arts Center renovation, excuse me. And we've had a touchpoint related to Top Green and Tarboro Road. So those are projects we want to move, move on right away. And then the last segment I'll talk a little bit about is community engagement. I am sure you all are familiar with this slide. This is the IAP2 Spectrum of Participation, starting in the left, moving to the right, is all the way to empowerment. That is how we classify the type of engagement, products, and styles, and means, and methods that we will use in our projects. So as I said, we have looked at every project and began to frame the timeframe that we expect to deliver on community engagement for each of these, written those into charters with our staff. Every community engagement process will be customized, but you'll know whether it's a, a city project or not, because we're looking at how we market and engage our community so there's a look of similarity. But we want to make sure we customize them based off of each location and community and stakeholder group we're working with. And that's what goes into the work that the staff has worked on the last 10 months. So at a high level, I'm not going to go through each of these, but you can see their range in sophistication and complexity. We've identified the level of participation, the duration in months that we expect to go through the community engagement process. And then finally, construction delivery methods. We're going to do a couple of projects differently and use alternative means. Most of our projects are going to be single prime bid, which is a standard process for the city. But the more complex ones like Chavis and Surtoma and Smokey Hollow and Tarboro, we would like to use the construction manager at risk process. And then for Walnut Creek Greenway, we would use design-build. We have cost partnership at the bottom. That's where we feel like we can find partners, building new greenway connections that we can cost-share on that. So that would be the public-private partnership option. And then just in next steps, just to remind the council, you will have the manager's proposed budget next Tuesday, which will include an increase in taxes as a result of this bond. It will also not only have the capital recommendations, but the operational recommendations within the budget. And then next step is really to continue to do this, work with the council, our parks board, multiple boards across the city on communication and transparency. We hope to initiate several requests for qualifications to bring designers on and other consultants on this summer, and begin community engagement processes as early as this fall. And then, of course, as a reminder, we still have a $21 million gap, so we will continue to look for partnerships, grants, and other sponsorship opportunities. And I'll take any questions.
Hey, Councilmember Melton.
Thank you. I saw you had Smokey Hollow Park on here for another round of engagement to consult with the public.
Yes.
I know, I believe that, so we've got that temporary skate park there now.
Yes.
It was meant to be sort of a pop-up activation. They ended up raising a good bit of money to put into it. And I think that idea came up after the master plan was developed. And so I would be interested, when you do this additional engagement, if we could consult with the public on their thoughts on the skate park, whether it should remain as part of the plan for the park or not. I do know that this is one of the parks that has a bit of a funding gap now, and we are trying to be creative in how we can close that gap. But there may be an opportunity there to work with Skate Raleigh if they're allowed to stay on cost-sharing or something. I'm just thinking about options. It's not, doesn't really align with the current master plan for the park, but it is very much on the peripheral of that space. And so I'd be interested if we could just get some public feedback on it.
Yeah, we, we've met with them, as you can probably guess. They're very interested in making it permanent. And we've come to a, a good vision of how we define a skate park. Doesn't have to be like a large concrete pad.
Right.
But can there be skate elements in some of these projects as well as Smokey Hollow?
Okay.
Well, you know what they say about temporary, like, the temporary dog park?
I do, but I don't.
Yes. I'm just saying. I think I've made that comment a couple of times, but yes, it becomes beloved. Mm-hmm. Councilmember Fort, then Jones.
While we're on the subject of Smokey Hollow, can we get an update about the remediation? And, you know, where, where do those costs figure into the budget that you're projecting as it relates to Smokey Hollow?
So all the costs that we presented today, including what went in the bond, and our continued remedial investigations, include remediation. So we really, we're really focusing on four areas: remediation, removal of impervious surface, providing north-south pedestrian connection, and redoing the stream. So, but we can, and maybe in a manager's update, I can provide a, an update on the specifics for that.
Yeah, because it seems like the remediation thing has been something of a challenge. And so just kind of want to make sure that we address all the environmental issues before we move forward with, you know, permanent installations for the park.
Will do. Thank you.
Can you go back to slide 20, please?
Minor not numbered. Can you remind me what it is?
It is the, the design-build bid build.
Oh, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you help me, and you may have said this, and I apologize if you're repeating it, can you help me understand the difference between the design-build and the construction-management at risk? You were saying that there were two differences.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm going to call an expert up here to come answer that question. Priscilla will talk a little bit. I don't want to try to act like I can explain it, but there's subtle differences.
She's the expert.
No, 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 no. And good afternoon. The difference is pretty much contracting-wise, design-build is one contract with the designer who then contracts with the contractor. And it's a process that they're actually working through the design as they're also getting pricing and construction. So it's, it's integrated, but the city would have one contract. Both are enabled through legislation through the General Assembly. So it's 143-128 dot 12, or 1A, 1B, and 1C, something like that. For construction-management at risk, you have two different contracts. You're contracting with the designer, you're contracting with the general contractor, who is also unable to work on it directly, because you're contracting both entities as professional services consultants. And so they work together. As the design is progressing, the contractor is working with the designer to identify early on conflicts, costing, and then you get a GMP price, which I believe you also get on the design-build. We see design-build more on greenway projects, horizontal projects, and that's why you see it recommended here. And that process also requires that the city has a policy that allows that. And we did approve a policy for design-build.
And just a follow-up question. Is there a preference from, from staff as to which one? Do you guys prefer design-build? Is construction-management cheaper? Is it more expensive? Can you tell me a little bit more?
So I think the, what staff does is it looks at the different attributes and characteristics of each project, and what makes sense in order to deliver the project. You're going to find that construction-management at risk and design-build may cost more because you're asking more of that design team on the front end. However, what you do is you get more certainty in delivery. You get a lot of the conflicts are eliminated early, and you get more guarantees with design-build and with construction-management at risk. With design-bid-build, we have a designer that builds it, and then a contractor looks at those plans over the course of 30 days, and then he makes a bid. So sometimes, for the more complex projects, design-bid-build is not the right fit. So I believe that what staff tries to do is choose a method of delivery that's appropriate for the characteristics and attributes of those projects.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, any additional questions? Councilmember Black?
Hi. I really enjoyed slide 16, which is increasing level of participation in all of the different ways that you're looking to engage. ways that you're looking to engage the community along the process. I guess my question is, is it too early to ask for some of the updates from where you guys are? I think it said consult with the Mine Creek Updates Improvement Trail, the Mine Creek Improvement Trail? I'm saying it wrong still.
Are you talking about the existing project we're working on?
Yes, and I know, I only, I'm bringing it up because I know I've gotten, before I was even sworn in, they had me come out to kind of hear some of their concerns. And I know we've had a briefing about it.
Yes.
So is it too early to ask for an update, like in a manager's report? Like what?
We can certainly send you a manager's reporting. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any additional questions? Councilmember Patton?
Yeah. Kind of staying on the theme of this chart, I'm super pleased to see the major projects in District B, the Kyle Drive Park and the Neuse River Park have like a, are higher on the level of participation. They're up there at Collaborate. I did notice that none of the projects listed are at the empower level. And I'm curious if like, within components of any of these projects, there are like sort of smaller pieces where the community would be at that empower level, where they really will have like that sort of direct decision-making power. Maybe not the entire project, but something within.
Possibly components, excuse me, for like play equipment. Those are which we have empower. Sorry. So yes, there are in components, but very narrow components, primarily because you, and empower, I do not want to step on Taisha because she's the expert in that. You're really turning everything over to say you make the decision. So what we do is we find out those aesthetic preferences, the play preferences, the look and feel and functionality, and then bring back those options based off of a couple of things. Can we do it legally? Is it within budget? And can we deliver it in the time we all agree to?
Sure, sure. That makes sense. And you know, we all remember Bodie McBoatface, so I get it. But that's helpful to know. Thank you. Other thing I wanted to ask about was if you could talk a little bit about the capacity that's left in the Parks Department for like park-related projects, works, innovation that's not like specifically outlined in the bond? Like what other capacity does your staff have?
Are you share, are you asking about other capital capacity, other projects or?
Capital capacity and just sort of like staff resourcing capacity for?
So as a part of the manager's proposed budget to address some of these projects, we are requesting some additional resources, which you'll find out on Tuesday. Is that, is that appropriate?
Thank you, Stephen. You handled that very well. Do we have any other questions? Mayor Protam?
Can we also in a manager's update report, get an update on the Biltmore Hills tennis courts? Because I know there's been meetings and I think there's a better plan to go forward. If we could just kind of get that and see where we are.
Yes, sir.
I just have a question relating to the partnership that we have with Carolina Panthers. How is that going and how is that park performing?
So it's performing great. The partnership continues. They actually help us with programming. So they will periodically bring individuals up, help us host programs. So it's been fruitful. So now that it's physically built, just keeping it activated. And when they are in town, they make sure to bring some of their staff. And I believe last summer they brought the Kings. You were, you were a part of that.
Well, I was there. That was fun.
Yeah.
Well, I also appreciated that they brought a group of the kids to one of the Panthers games.
That's absolutely, yes.
And I just, I happened to be there that day.
Oh.
I had no idea. And it was joyous to watch the kids.
Yeah, they've been a great partner. We'll keep on reminding them when we're in Raleigh.
Yes, we do. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I believe, do you have anything additional?
I do, thank you. But before I get into the public announcement I was about to make, I just want to say hats off to staff. Many of you will remember that one of my goals last year was about project delivery. How long it took for projects to be built kind of drove me insane. So literally, we put together a team and that team has put together an amazing timeline in what you saw today of how projects will progress and move forward through the city. So Jonathan, to the tune of 2012, I can assure you, we won't be sitting here 12 years from now talking about a project in the 2022 bond. I probably won't be here, but hopefully somebody will not be talking about a project from 2022. But really honestly, I think we challenged staff before the bond was even passed to figure out a way that we could deliver projects because that creates a sense of assurance, that creates a sense of trust from the public and a degree of confidence that we can actually deliver on that commitment that they made when they went into the ballot box. So thank you guys for what you presented today. That is a good first step in how we're going to move the projects in the 2022 bond. So totally excited about how quick that stuff is going to come online. And next, I have two announcements to make about two new members. Well, one new member and one reacquaintance to the City of Raleigh team. Robin Dekel will be serving as our Communications Director effective the first week in June. You may remember Robin or you may have heard from Robin. Robin served with Mandy Cohen during some of the COVID situations that the state was involved in. She also worked with some of the work around monkeypox vaccines. She has 20 years plus of experience in communications, served as a reporter, has done some marketing, is totally excited about joining our staff. And she will be here in June and she will set up some time to meet with each of you to get some of your ideas in place. And she is ready to hit the ground running. We had hoped she'd be here today, but she had a death in her family, so she had to leave out of town yesterday. So totally excited. And many of you all will probably recognize her after you see her. And then secondly, I would like to announce our HR Director. As we all know, HR is the lifeline of any organization. It is the first point when you come into an organization. And typically, it is the last point when you leave an organization, whether it's to sign up for benefits or whether it is to do an exit interview. And we have struggled, quite frankly, for the last several years to get some strong leadership in that position to be able to carry this city forward and provide the level of service that our employees not only demand, but that our employees expect. So I am happy to say that Sharnelle Jones will be returning back to the City of Raleigh. Sharnelle served as the Assistant Director from 2015 to 2019. She was a business partner that worked with us on the implementation of the comp study. Lord knows, we had many nights of meetings with public safety. We did a roadshow, almost 35 meetings to kind of get out the components of the compensation study. So she's well-versed on all things compensation and benefits. Most recently, she's been employed with Capitol Broadcasting. So we've got to do some work, Mary, and to kind of smooth that relationship over a little bit. But we are totally excited and she will be joining us on May 22. She will bring over 23 years of experience in HR from the private sector. She's worked at the state level and she's had some municipal experience. So I trust that you will agree that both of these ladies will be great assets to our leadership team. And I'm totally excited about both of them joining us in the next couple of weeks.
That's awesome.
Yes.
I know that we had some very qualified candidates and glad to see where you all landed. And I look forward, especially on the communication side, to really upping our game. So very excited.
And she's going to be intentional about website improvements as well. We hear it a lot and Michelle Malin and I kind of stressed that to her when we met with her last week. So totally excited about some new opportunities.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you. Councilmember Jones?
And I'm just going to shift gears just for a second. First of all, thank you so much for all of the presentations and then for the work with the new staff. I'm really excited to meet them. I wanted to get guidance on budget notes. So I wanted to make just a request and tell me where I'm going with this. But I have heard from the community and heard from a lot of constituents in my area about school crossing guards. And I want to make sure that we know that they play a really important role in assisting with safety and security of children as they walk to and from school each day. I know this role is performed by part-time staff and I would like to ask for a budget note to look at whether or not the pay rate for school crossing guards should be adjusted. And if an adjustment is warranted, I would like for staff to suggest ways to find the cost of school crossing guards across the board. So I'm really interested in finding out how we can help support our school system. And I'm not sure of the whole process of it, but I wanted to just put that out there just for looking into.
Okay, thank you. Bring that back in the form of a budget note. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, we are now adjourned. Thank you.